I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, one in the business and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. Our flag alleges to be Texas state, one state, under God, and one in the business.
Item three is public comments. Monica, we have anybody signed up tonight?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item four is superintendent's recognitions. Members, will we all please come in front of the dais?
Our first item is the recognition of Christmas card artist grade six through 12.
Each year Temple ISD encourages students to submit artwork in a design contest for the district holiday card. This year's those submissions came from our middle and high school students. So students, if you're going to be recognized, if you'll go ahead and stand up and come on and line up over here, please. While I'm finishing up my reading.
Don't be afraid, come on.
Don't be afraid, come on. Come on over. Yep, wine over. Tonight, we have a chance to recognize the 11 finalists in that competition. Each finalist will receive a poster featuring the artwork submitted by our 11 finalists, along with a pack of printed cards featuring their submission. Now, all of our students were able to be here, but as I call your name, students, you'll walk up and shake the board member's hand, and then we'll stand up there in the front, holding your artwork, okay? All right. So our first finalist is Asia Abbey from Temple High School. Esmeralda Alvarado from Lohar Middle School. Charlie Bonichini from Bonham Middle School. Maya Clements from Temple High School. Makaya Ewing from Temple High School. Arianna Jamal from Temple High School. Mavis Miller from Bonham Middle School. Izzy Oster from Bonham Middle School. Karina Ortega from Temple High School. Pablo Sierra Gomez from Temple High School. Adrian Woods from Travis Science Academy. Awesome, awesome! Kids, come and stand. If you guys are coming, stand right there in the front. And this year, the winner to the contest, as voted on by district employees in an extremely close race, is Makaya Ewing from Temple High School. And Shirley's going to show everybody her artwork. Makaya will also receive a framed copy of her artwork. These finalists, these three ladies were chosen from 100 submissions this year. And we want to thank you for your middle school and high school art teachers for the amazing job. They do, congratulations, once again, well done, well done. Well done. Thank you. Parents, anybody else want to picture?
We won't let them move. We won't let them move.
Okay, thank you, girls. Thank you, girls. Oh, great job.
I just want to say, y'all's artwork is amazing. I always look forward to this time of year. It's amazing, the talent, the students that we have. It certainly brightens up our Christmas. Thank y'all again.
Good job, ladies. Good job, ladies. Yeah.
Our next is the College Board National Recognition Program.
All right. So the College Board National Recognition Program awards academic honors to high performing students, to help them stand out to colleges and celebrate their hard work. Awardees are among the highest achieving students in their communities. Students earn this recognition based on their academic achievements in school and outstanding performance on the PSA T, PSA 10, and AP exam. And y'all, you guys go ahead and come on and line up right here. That's perfect. This year, we had 27 Temple High School students combined to earn a total of 38 recognitions from College Board, in either the first generation recognition award or the new school recognition award categories. And so tonight, we are privileged to honor these students. So students, as I call your name, you're going to walk up and shake the board member's hand, and then we'll stand up there in the front and we'll take a picture in a minute. All right, Oliver Allen. Oliver Allen. John Averill. John Averill. Victoria Carisales, who earned both awards. Trey Goings, who earned both awards. Aaron Galerian. Aaron Galerian. Kevin G. Kevin G. Alfonso Lina or Days, who earned both awards. Isabel Nervy, who earned both awards. Brittany Ortiz. Brittany Ortiz. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Anarni Rama, who earned both awards. Aaron Robles Uribe, who earned both awards. Kylan Archie. Kylan Archie. Andres Gomez. Andres Gomez. Seth Greenwood. Seth Greenwood. Who earned both awards. Jack Herkman. Jack Herkman. Steven Jones. Steven Jones. Samaj Manning. Kosy Gandhi. Kosy Gandhi. Juanay. Mariah Proctor. Mariah Proctor. Federico Ramos, who earned both awards. Marissa Rakowsky. Marissa Rakowsky. Adeja Sanders. Adeja Sanders. Lila Swanson. Lila Swanson. Madeline Yu. Garrett Seeholm. Garrett Seeholm. And Shaylen White, who earned both awards. Students, we'd like to join with College Board in congratulating you for your amazing achievements and recognition. We're so very proud of you, well done, Temple High School students. Even had a light show for you. We will take, we will, we will take as many pictures as you need. Uh-oh. Okay, everybody stay still. Moms and dads. Everybody else. Everybody else. Get your pictures. I won't let them move. I won't let them move. I won't let them move, I promise. This is something big to be proud of. This is something big to be proud of. All right, everybody good? All right, everybody good? All right, well done. Congratulations, you guys come on out.
Our next is Friends of Temple ISD. Wes Teeters.
Wes Teeters, you want to go ahead and join the board on the platform? The Friend of Temple ISD Wildcat Award allows the districts to formally recognize high-level partners and individuals for their contributions. Wes Teeters has served the Temple ISD community both literally and figuratively for more than 30 years. He's catered countless meals for coaching staff, athletic teams, and other departments across the district, even going so far as to deliver meals to out-of-town games to feed our students. Wes brings in students from Temple ISD's 18-plus program twice a week to help them learn and practice job skills at his restaurant. He also provides an annual Thanksgiving meal to anyone in the community who wants to participate in another show of support for Temple. Wes has served as the president of the Temple High School Quarterback Club and also sponsored a scholarship for Temple ISD students for several years. You would be hard-pressed to find a bigger fan of Temple ISD and all its programs than Mr. Teeters. But what makes his support even more special is the fact that it all comes from his servant's heart and is always seasoned with a kind word and a smile. He's created lasting bonds with Temple ISD students and families and always says that he receives as much from his partnership with Temple ISD as he gives to those receiving his support. As the plaque he is receiving tonight reads, his generosity nourishes the family of Temple ISD and embodies the true meaning of community. Because of all these reasons and the impact that you've made on our students, our staff and our families, as well as the impact you make on our greater Temple community, we are thrilled to officially recognize Wes Teeters with the Friend of Temple ISD Wildcat Award. Congratulations. That's the best smile right there.
Tell you what, tonight, this is such an exciting time. I don't know that there is anyone with a more true, blue Wildcat heart than this man right here. There's so many reasons, besides the ones that Dr. Adams had mentioned. Two pages worth, I think. My goodness. This man's heart is the size of 100 giants or more. I have known him for many years. I go to his restaurant. I see the special needs children working in there and learning how to do a job. He feeds our kids. He feeds our coaches. He feeds our staff. He feeds the community. Not only our stomachs, but our souls as well. He always says that God wins. And I always, every time I walk into his restaurant, it's on the ground right there. It says, "God wins." And you know, I think today, Wes Teeters wins. He is, I can't say enough about you, Wes. I'm very proud that you're part of our community and I'm very proud to have you part of Temple ISD.
Just real quick. First thing is, my name is Wes, I'm a Christian. That's first and foremost. And hopefully you see it. And hopefully you see it. I don't have to tell you. If anybody would have known me years ago, they would have gave up on me. And I can tell you, don't give up on that person because that person will, got to get to them, it just takes them a little while. Sometimes people's heads are a little thicker. They don't realize or not seeing clear. Anyway, I just want to say again, it's anything I do, I don't do anything without God. God does it through me. It is not me, I promise you. God blessed me and gave me that little girl. And my wife. And I can't thank them enough for putting up with me. You know what I'm saying? It just, they gave me that chance to get out of my stubbornness. I'm not completely grown up, but I'm going to grow up. I grew up a bunch. Yeah, she just shook her head. Yeah, she just shook her head. Anyway, there's another guy I went to school with and I'm not going to point him out. Anyway, I told him when we got here, I said, "Man, can you imagine? Would you have ever imagined where we're at today?" Where we were back then, it's just crazy. But God is good all the time again. It's nothing about me. And I will tell you, if you don't believe in God, talk to me, I can tell you truth. I can show you, I had colon cancer. And I go Thursday, it's been over two years, I go Thursday to get my port taken out. That's amazing. That's amazing. So I mean, he's got more plans for me, so keep looking because I'm probably going to be doing so. All right, y'all have a blessed day. All right, y'all have a blessed day. Thank you.
She's so cute.
Wes, can we get your family up here? Paul, come on. Come on. I mean, get pictured, come on. I would have dressed up, but I don't know.
We also had a catering job. Yes, we had, that was right before this. Oh, you have sauce and cheese.
Oh, there you go. There you go.
Hold on, pose.
Oh, she's so precious. I love it. I love it. She's hungry. Bye, ho. Bye, ho. Thank you all so much. Thank you all so much for being here. Really appreciate it.
It'll be hard to top that. It'll be hard to top that.
I know it.
Yeah. And our last recognition is Rotary Educator of the Month.
The Rotary Club supports Teachers and Temple ISD by recognizing the educator of the month at club meetings throughout the year. We would like to start recognizing the outstanding educators that receive that award by also honoring them at board meetings. So we begin tonight by recognizing a pair of Temple ISD teachers. Lynn Keaton. Yep, come on up. Yep, come on up. Is, Lynn is a teacher at Travis Science Academy and she was the first Temple ISD teacher recognized by the Rotary Club this school year. Miss Keaton is the RLA Department Head and teaches eighth grade reading language arts at Travis. Her nomination highlighted how her dedication is evident through her tireless work, whether she's developing an innovative curriculum for students, providing extra support for struggling learners, or mentoring new staff members. Her genuine passion for students and deep commitment to their success makes her an invaluable member of Travis Science Academy. And we would also like to recognize Ms. Shirley. Ms. Gromen, come on down. Ms. Gromen of Edwards Academy is the most recent Rotary Club honorary. Mrs. Gromen teaches English at Edwards and her nomination reads in part. Ms. Gromen is an excellent English teacher, but her greatest strength is her ability to connect with students from all walks of life. All of her students feel like they belong. Ms. Gromen not only teaches students to read and write better, but she also supports their social and emotional well-being. Ms. Keaton and Mrs. Gromen, we are so happy to be able to join the Rotary Club of Temple in recognizing you as educators of the month. We're very grateful for your impact you make on students and their families and your campuses. Congratulations.
Before we strike our poses, I just want to make a few comments. One, I want to thank the Rotary Club for honoring our teachers. I just don't think you can do that enough. I think that every chance we get, we should thank and honor our teachers. So I truly thank our civic organizations for doing that. And it's one thing to be recognized inside your organization, but it's another when you're recognized outside. And I think that says a lot about the impact that you have. And the impact you make. And I just want to congratulate both of you. Thank you for sharing your talents with Temple ISD and thank you for impacting our children.
You did this at Rotary, you wanted to sit down this way.
Sorry, Trish, I didn't see you. Anybody else? Anybody else? Thank Mike of State.
Thank you all. Congratulations. It's awesome. Congratulations, yeah.
Water, bud. Thank you so much.
Item five, executive hires. Do we have any items tonight?
Item six.
Item six is the Board Presidents' Report. A future item discussion. Any items the Board wishes to discuss at a future meeting? Okay? Okay? And B is important dates and Dr. Ott.
Well, this is a very short list, considering that we're about to go for, about to be released for break, but we do have Board Retreat, December 11th, Campus Tourist Travis. Is that right? Travis Science Academy.
And then December 16th, we have our Visioning Retreat. 4:30 here. I'll have a document that I'll give each of you after the Board Meeting to fill out. I also emailed it to you as well. Some pre-work before we get into creating a new vision moving forward. For, say, the next four or five years. And then we have Temple University, January 5th. When we return, and I believe Relaisia is doing the opening. For that, yes. Yes. Relaisia, all right. You have plenty of time over Christmas to come up with your remarks. Welcoming the teachers. And then you have two sheets behind the important dates. There are the Fine Arts Addendum for December, activities, December 8th through January 12th. As always, I just encourage you to try to attend as many of those you can, see our kids perform. Really wishing us the best going into Christmas season. I did have a chance to attend the Grinch Friday, and it was fabulous for those of you that had a chance to go over the weekend. Our theater department, our students did a fantastic job. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ott.
Item seven, it's going to send items. Item C, Ms. Juarez will be abstaining from that. So what is the pleasure of the Board dealing with items A through B, D through I, III?
I move to approve consent items, 7A through B and D through I, III.
Motion made by Ms. Gowen, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ms. Cook. And a reminder to the Board, from now on, we'll be raising our hands for Mrs. Boyd to tally our responses. So, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Any opposed, raise your hand.
The eyes have it. The eyes have it. Thank you very much. Item C, 2026, joint interlocal agreement election. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I move to approve consent agenda, item C.
Motion made by Ms. Gowen.
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. Same thing, everybody raise your hands. Noted that Ms. Juarez will be abstaining. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay? All those opposed, raise your hand. Item passes, thank you. Item passes, thank you. Item eight, action items, A, resources. Consideration of termination of at-will contract. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I move that the Board find that there is good recourse to terminate Raul Daniels for the reason presented to the Board by the Administration.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, is there a second?
I'll second the motion. I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Ms. Gowen. All those in favor, raise your hands. For I? For I? Okay. All opposed, raise your hands. All opposed, raise your hands. The motion passes. The motion passes, thank you. Item B, academics. Item B, academics. Dr. Adams? Dr. Adams? No items tonight? Item C, silly operations. Consideration for approval of a guaranteed maximum price for the cafeteria kitchen renovation project at Temple High School. Mr. Boyd.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Posey. Beds were received in early November by American Constructors for the cafeteria kitchen project at Temple High School. This project includes the addition of square footage, a complete redesign and relocation of the kitchen and extensive renovations to the dining area. This project was a key component of the 2022 bond, and it represents, in my opinion, a very impactful improvement to Temple High School. So what I'd like to do first is show you a brief video of the work that we're looking to do. It'll be a quick fly-through if you will. I'll note before you do, there are some pieces on here with graphics and so forth that may change. They may not end up looking that way when it comes to final time. Those are things we'll work on. Also, when you think about the, when you see the furnishings and the equipment and the tables, those are placeholders. We may do some things unique with that. But I wanted y'all to get a quick look at what this entails, and then we'll talk through the rest of the item.
I'll mention that in addition to renovated spaces, this work will connect existing main cafeteria, if you will, to the ninth-grade cafeteria. We will have one cafeteria without students having to go outside or down the hall to get to the other. We will have one centralized kitchen, and then we will have the predominant, we'll have the majority of line servicing lines and one location with a couple of others up on the higher level. We've worked on this for months, and I appreciate, you all on the Facilities Committee have heard a lot about this for a while, and I appreciate that. We've had a lot to discuss, and we've worked through it to get these plans designed. I'll also mention, really appreciate Stan Tech being here tonight. And Lowell is the lead designer on this, and again, I'll talk through some of the details again, but I think this, parts of the cafeteria, parts of the kitchen have not been touched since the building was built in 1965. I was born in 1965. And I can tell you, that's a long time to not have any improvement done. And so, so, really, what this represents, not only for our school nutrition department and for efficiencies, but also for appearances, and for what our students are going to enjoy, this will be a significant improvement to this campus. And so, really looking forward to get started. Let me talk through a few more things. Over the past several months, considerable time has been spent in developing a staging schedule for the work to minimize any potential negative impacts. Anything that would impact the campus negatively and would also allow for school nutrition services to continue to operate uninterrupted through the project. Those are two really critical pieces. So tonight, the Administration is recommending approval of a total GMP, guaranteed maximum price of $11,808,966. The proposal letter from American Constructors and the accompanying documentation is at your place tonight. The Administration has already identified some potential savings options with American that would ultimately lower the total cost. Right now, we're looking at approximately $300,000 if we choose to accept those. And I'll say that anything we do with that would be in consultation with Stan Tech because, first of all, we want to be efficient. We want to obviously do the project with as much ability to watch the dollars, but we don't want to minimize the integrity of the project or the impact of the project. And so, we'll continue to work through that together to identify anything. And we'll continue to look for any other value engineering opportunities. As always, the GMP includes contingency funds and allowances, which if not expended, will return to the district. In addition, any other savings that we can find, that anything can be generated throughout the project will be returned to the district as well. If this project is approved tonight, work will begin during the Christmas break. We've already worked with Dr. Mayo, and we have alternative plans, and he has alternative plans for places for students. Ian Vestal has been critical in this as well, because this certainly stretches their abilities there. But again, I think the critical pieces, there's always going to be a disruption when you do something of this magnitude in your largest campus. But, the plan we've come up with, we think, impacts things the least and allows the high school to continue to operate almost as normal and allows the school nutrition department to operate basically as normal. So, completion of the entire project will take about a year and a half and be staged over three semesters. Do y'all have any questions?
Members, any questions?
I move for approval of the guaranteed maximum price of the cafeteria kitchen renovation at Temple High School.
Motion made, Members to Gaines, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Myers. Members, all in favor, please raise your hands. Okay? Any opposed, raise your hands. The motion passes, thank you. The motion passes, thank you. Yes.
Just want to make two comments. First, I want to thank Kemp Boyd, Ryan, Dr. Mayo, everybody administratively that has been involved, working on this. Ian Vestal. Want to thank Stan Tech, not just for showing up, but always showing up. Stan Tech has been... Stan Tech has been involved with probably all the renovations of the high school in the last several years in some form or fashion and their fingerprints are all over Temple High School and this will be, I think, one of the most substantial renovations that we will see in that building. And it's really fantastic, can't wait to see the students' faces when they unveil, see it unveiled. The other thing I want to share with the board that you may not know is because of the design, there's an opportunity to go for three lunch periods to two. And if that's done, then that allows us to take that one lunch period and add time back into classrooms and have longer instructional periods throughout the day.
Which I think is a huge win.
And a lot of times, you don't think about some of the instructional advantages that come with renovations that may not be classroom renovations, but this is a great example of that. Putting time right back into instruction throughout the day. So I think that's something very important. Our high school principals already had some conversations, I know Dr. Adams, Dr. Mayo talked about that possibility and I think it's a real possibility to have two lunch periods instead of three. That's just something I wanted to share with the board. Thank you, Kent, appreciate it.
Thank you all, appreciate you. We're ready to get to work.
Okay, thank you.
Next item, consideration for approval of architect project assignments for the twenty twenty-five bond projects.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. Thank you, Mr. Posey. The board previously approved, several, a couple of years ago, the top three architectural design firms for future projects through a ranking process. Now that the twenty twenty-five bond is passed, the district administration has prepared recommended assignments for each of those firms. Several considerations have been used in preparation of the recommended assignments. Ability to provide master planning services, location of the construction, familiarity of the campus and existing workload, not just in Temple High School, but in other places. All of those things are taken into consideration. In addition, the proposed assignments and related rationale were discussed in a recent facilities committee meeting to garner feedback from committee members. And I'll first of all say, all three design firms that we will be working with are quality, they will do a great job, I have no concerns with that whatsoever. I sleep well at night knowing that these three will be the ones that we will be partnering with. So therefore, the recommended assignment, architect assignment projects are as follows. V L K would get the Temple High School gymnasium and front facade, the Meredith Dunbar classroom addition, Hector P. Garcia classroom addition and core expansion and the design of future middle school number four. That's design only, no construction, there's no construction for that on this bond, but that is, was part of the bond to get us moving forward so that we can design it now or in the next couple of years and then it could be used for a future bond, future construction project. Stan Tech, will get the Temple High School classroom restroom addition and associated parking. HVAC improvements at high school, the Bonham front facade, Lamar locker room renovations and the design of future elementary school number nine. And as with the future middle school, piece a while ago, this is designed only, no construction on this bond for that either. And then finally, M R B will get the Temple High School storage facility and site work, Wheatley renovations. Edwards classroom and restroom addition and what I think is a huge piece to this, the eighteen plus program addition, which will be very special, and the Kennedy Pal classroom addition. We've worked for a long time, Ryan and I worked a lot on this to try to balance and to try to make things fair and to try to make things, in a way that made sense for us as a district, for the architects as well. And then we discussed that and appreciate the feedback we got from the facility committee a couple of weeks ago as well. Do you all have any questions about that process or about the recommendation tonight?
Members, any questions?
Members, any questions? Mr. Boyd? If not, this does require approval.
I move for approval.
Motion made by Mrs. Cook.
I'll second.
Seconded by, Ms. Galwin, all in favor, please raise your hands.
All opposed, raise your hands.
All opposed, raise your hands.
The motion passes, thank you.
The motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. Item D, finance, one discussion and possible action to repeal or decrease the local option residence homestead exemption for adults who are over sixty-five years of age or are disabled that is currently offered pursuant to Texas tax code section one one point three D.
I know we've had some discussions on this item and I just want to make one clarification that isn't obvious, or isn't obvious when you read the agenda item, but the repeal of the local option for this exemption does not apply to those that are already receiving the homestead exemption. So if you are currently sixty-five or older and have been receiving this local option, that will continue, your grandfather did. I think that's a very important piece of information to have for everybody, so I just wanted to say that as a point of clarification.
Okay. Members, is there a motion?
Members, is there a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Motion by, Mrs. Myers, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines, all in favor, please signify by raising your hands.
All those opposed, please raise your hands. The motion passes.
The motion passes, thank you.
Item two, consideration for approval acceptance of the annual financial report for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And just a reminder, members, we had a public hearing at our last meeting, we couldn't vote on it because of the government shutdown, so this item needs to be approved tonight. Is there a motion?
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mrs. Alexander.
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook.
All those in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed, please raise your hands.
All opposed, please raise your hands.
Motion passes, thank you.
Motion passes, thank you.
Item E, student services.
Consideration for approval, update one twenty-six, local politics. Mr. Hawkins, welcome.
Good evening. Good evening. Due to the volume of, we are just presenting the local policies tonight and in a future meeting we'll have the legal ones. So these are, all the local ones that will, presented for your consideration for approval tonight. Before we start, we would mention that, there is a clause in law that's called the harmony with laws. And so that, while some of these, we have been doing since the legislature concluded this summer, we have been following the law, this is just the legal, the local policies catching up. So you'll recognize some of these things that we're already, already doing. So if we look at B E local, this is where board meetings have to be held outside, typical work hours and that the deadline for submitting agenda items is, instead of the seventh, is now the tenth, calendar day. And notice has to be given, and they used to say seventy-two hours, now it is three business days. So that is the changes for.
We started that several months ago.
Yes. And then another piece of this, as Mr. Posey already mentioned, voting has to be recorded and so it has to be either a roll call vote or a show of hands so that it can be seen. Members, board members voted which way. So that's part of this B E local. Next, B E D. Next, B E D talks about, talks about. Board meeting logistics. And one of the things that, it says now, in law, that the public comment has to occur at the beginning of the meeting. And then also, where, in the past, if there was a lot of people come for comments, the board had the ability to. Schedule another meeting for that agenda item and hear it or move it to the end of the meeting. Those are now not options for the board. The adjustment that you have is you can reduce the amount of time. It is typically three minutes, but you can reduce that so that, the idea behind the law is that now everyone has an opportunity to present to the board. C J. C J. Local. This is, where, where. It is now prohibited for district contractors to engage in D E I and so this is, and that if that occurs, we have the ability to terminate their contract. That's, that is C J local. The next two. The next two, C J A and C L E are just title changes. There's nothing in the body of the policy that is changed for that. Next one, C Q B. With, with, House Bill one fifty. They created the Texas cyber command for looking at technology and looking for cyber issues. Issues, it is now, gone from the information resources department to the Texas cyber command. And so this just changes the names of those different organizations, different departments in that state. C Q D. C Q D, local, this is a new policy, talks about A I, and says that A I is a support tool and can't replace teachers and if a student uses A I deceptively, then they can be disciplined according to the student code of conduct. That's a new policy. Next. Next, C S A, local. This is from the Texas Women's Privacy Act, you might know this one as the bathroom bill. That went through the legislature. We as a district are required to designate the use of private spaces and those private spaces can only be used by students of the gender of which they were assigned at birth. And so, and so, there are a couple of caveats for that. And these assigned spaces have been put into the handbook, so it's, when this came out, we designated those, so it's already listed in the handbook, talking about locker rooms and restrooms. One of the interesting things about locker rooms is that, so, if we, like for soccer, we have a male coach for the girls' team, the girls' locker room is designated, a private space for the girls. But we can, at times, adjust that designation so that at halftime when the coach comes in, it's no longer a private space. Or if it's a parent night and they want to sit tour, then we can designate it no longer a private space and then revert it back. So that's one of the unique pieces of this law and if you read the handbook, that will, it outlines that. Next. C V local, this basically takes out the dollar amount for construction contracts and just makes it the threshold by law. So rather than having to come back, every time they change the threshold, now it's just whatever the law says is what the policy says. D B D. D B D, local. This is, this is, might have heard this as the, mood lighting, in that administrators are, cannot. Receive compensation for duties performed from. In addition to, in addition to what they are assigned at school, but there is an exception and that is for superintendents and assistant superintendents, that is, and others is for higher education. So if someone is teaching at an institution of higher education, this is an exemption that does not apply for that. If there is, if there is another, another job that an employee wants, then it has to be submitted to the superintendent. Next, D E C. Next, D E C, this defines what the daily rate of pay is. I know this is a bunch, are there any questions so far? Take a deep breath and we'll continue with the second half here. Next is D F B B. That is, that is. The policy where engaging in D E I, D E I activities has been added for, in the list of non-renewal reasons. The next one. The next one. With D G B A, this is going to be very similar to three, three of them, the grievance policies. Now we have the grievance policies for employees, for students and parents and for community members, so a lot of this is going to track with those, those other ones, but there are some significant differences. One is for employees, they have, their timeline is now fifteen days from when they first knew that. An event happened, but it can also be with. It can be extended if it works through the informal process. So once that process is done, then they have fifteen days to submit a grievance. So the main changes, and this is the same for all of them, and it went from. Business days to calendar days was one of the big changes throughout all of them. And so, for, being able to respond, instead of fifteen, or instead of ten, ten business days to respond, now it is twenty calendar days and that's throughout. And for, being able to, or. For the district to respond, then that's, it was ten business days, now it is ten calendar days, so that has been reduced and that's. The same throughout those. Another thing that you need is that. If it gets to level three, the board can decide to select a committee of three board members to hear that level three. Rather than, in front of the entire board, that is, that is an option that you have in the past, it's been presented to the board, but just know that that's possible and that. You have sixty days, once they submit the level three, you have sixty days in order to hear that complaint. Another piece with that is. The law took out. The law took out the, your, option of. With a level three, if you hear it, and if, in the past, if time had passed and you didn't make a decision, then it reverted back to the decision at the level two. All now, law requires you as a board to make a decision within sixty days, you no longer have that, that option. Next, E E P. This is a new policy and this is where it says that the syllabus has to be presented to the students and published on the website. E F A is, is added a new section. And this is where parents can review instructional material. If they feel like it's not aligned to the district's adopted materials or if they think it's not the appropriate rigor. E H B A F. This changes the reporting time, in the past, we had employees and had forty-eight hours to report a, if there was a. If there is an incident or a, a thought that their neglect was happening. We had forty-eight hours, now it is twenty-four. That has been, that has been reduced. E I A local. E I A local. This is the one where, the parents now have the opportunity for two in-person conferences per school year. F A local. F A local, this is a, also a new policy, whereas the district has to establish a parent portal on the website so that parents can submit comments to the campus administration, district administration and the board. According, our website currently has that ability. And so, until we receive further guidance, that it might have to look different. We are in compliance because we, parents have that ability to email us now. F A F E F. This allows a student to be excused for up to five hours per week for religious instruction. That is offered by a private entity. F F A C local. This, this, one of the things the state did was give districts more flexibility in administering non-prescription medications, as well as now adding herbal substances and dietary supplements. We have, we talking with health services. We are going to continue our current practice, and this denotes that, of still needing a doctor's note in order for us to administer that. One of their concerns was the. Non-prescription drugs, in particular the herbal substances, not being regulated. And so, that's why they're, they're more comfortable with keeping our current process, which is a doctor's note for all those. Next, F F B. Next, F F B. This is. This is. Where we, as a, as a district has to notify employees if there was a threat against the campus made on social media, that we deemed, that we deemed sufficient, that we deemed significant. F F local. F local. Here is, we have to notify our parents in no less than one business day if we suspect a, an employee to have committed a criminal offense against a student. That's, we have one day to now do that. F F G local. Again, that's another one of those, instead of 48 hours, we now have 24 hours to report abuse. Abuse. Evidence of abuse. Now we get to F N G. This is the student piece of that grievance process. Grievance process. So it's all those same timelines apply. The only difference is that at the start, the parent has 90 days instead of the 15 to submit a grievance. And if, during that, during that informal process, we, when we give them the, here's the paperwork on how to submit, now they have 30 days, whichever one is longer. Otherwise, all those things are the exact same as the employee one. Employee one. F O local. I will bring your, bring your particular attention to this, because this is a, we're recommending a change that's different from what's in your packet. One of the things is. The exception on the second page where it talks about corporal punishment, in that the coaches and P E teachers can have the student walk around the track. While that's, we received a letter saying that's more from Tasby's lawyers, that that's more appropriate being put in the handbook rather than here in local policy. And so, we are recommending that to do just that, that we will put this in the handbook and have this out of local policy. G F local. This is the, this is the community piece of the grievance process. So it's all the same timelines, except that's related for community members. And then, and then, the last one, G K A local. It just changes the language and definition of a Texas handgun license holder to match the state. So that is 126. And like I said, that's, this is the local, the big one from the legislature for consideration tonight, and we'll do the legal ones. Add another. Thank you very much. Members, any questions? Members, any questions? Mr. Hagenberg?
Does require approval.
Does require approval for approval. Move for approval. Motion by Mr. Gaines. Seconded by Mrs. Alexander. Seconded by Mrs. Alexander. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
All those opposed, raise your hand.
All those opposed, raise your hand. The motion passes. Thank you. The motion passes. Thank you. Item F, is board committee reports. First one is the policy committee meeting, November 19th, 2025. Mrs. Cook?
Thank you. The meeting was called to order at 4:30 P. M. Dr. Renata Rogers, chief of academics officer, presented the committee with a list of library books that the district would like to add to our libraries. Update 126 local policies were presented, and the recommended policy changes were highlighted and discussed. Randy Stanford presented the annual review of the investment policy. No changes were recommended. The optional homestead exemption was also discussed. These four items were on the agenda at tonight's board meeting. The meeting was adjourned at 5:25 P. M.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Thank you, Mrs. Cook. The next committee meeting is Wednesday, January 28th, 2026, at 4:30 P. M. Item two, facilities committee meeting, November 20th, 2025. Mr. Gaines?
Thank you, Mr. Posey. Thank you, Mr. Posey. The meeting was called to order at 4:33 P. M. The Stanford provided an update on regarding the local optional homestead exemptions. This item was presented earlier tonight, meeting. Mr. Boyd and Dr. Odd presented three options for the improvement of the final space at the middle schools for future master planning processes. The master plan will be updated to reflect the desires of the committee. Committee discussed the projects, potential architect's, assignment for the 2025 project, bond projects. These assignments were presented earlier tonight also. Mr. Boyd presented a timeline for the architectural assignments and construction managers at risk selections, related to the bond. That was also brought up tonight also. Mr. Perez presented an update on the power washing projects across the district. Work at Temple High School is complete. Work at Travis is underway, and Bonham will be addressed in the spring. Mr. Boyd presented a report on the status of the seat belts on the buses. The board unanimously approved the contract for improvement of the transportation route replacement project at Temple High School Auditorium. The meeting was adjourned at 5:53 P. M. Our next meeting will be held January 29th, 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Thank you, Mr. Gaines. With no further items tonight, we are adjourned. Thank you very much for attending.